This is the Pledge of Allegiance and will be led by Councilor Blake.
I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. At this time, I'll just point this out. We've had our public hearings for the budget and stuff like that, so if anybody wants to address the budget, this is the appropriate time and place to make your comments. So when you come down, please name an address for the record. And don't be bashful.
Jerry Clem, 701 Burl Avenue, Lewiston Orchards, Lewiston, Idaho. I say that Lewiston Orchards too, because I was up there when they annexed us. Honorable Mayor, councilors, city manager, staff and guests, I'm here to address the issue of Valley Vision. I believe that there's some things that probably ought to be looked at, and I'm going to use your overhead to help point some of that out if I can, if that's...
Certainly.
Okay?
We have...
I've got...
I wonder, Jerry needs some help on that.
I think we got it, Jerry. Just put it up there underneath the lights there on the screen.
First off, I'd like to point out that this first, first two screenshots that you're going to see is about Beautiful Downtown Lewiston. Oh, upright, yeah, okay.
Yeah, rotate it.
Turn it around.
Yeah, just turn it ninety degrees. Turn it this way. There you go.
There you go. Okay, this is Beautiful Downtown Lewiston's mission statement. If you'll notice that their mission is almost entirely, or is entirely, with Downtown Lewiston. And it's addressed in numerous documents on their website. And this comes off of their website. I'd like to point out also, and I've got, I'm sorry about this, but it's going to, I don't think I can get the whole thing on there. It might be, maybe that'll do it. This is off their website also, and it's about advertising for property sites that are available downtown. And they're, if you'll notice, they're either on Main Street or right close to Main Street, and it's all in Downtown Lewiston. You go to Valley Vision. This is, this is Valley Vision's, maybe I better move that over a little. Valley Vision's mission statement, and you'll notice that it talks, talks about outlying areas and things that are not mentioned in Beautiful Downtown Lewiston in their vision statement. And I say that because they're both equally important. It's just that one don't overlap the other, and they take care of a good, they're a good job at taking care of the region as a whole. If you look at this one, that substantiates the area that Valley Vision is promoting. And they're all almost entirely out of the city of Lewiston, except for some previous ones that was, were SEL located, and we've got some property there yet. As a commissioner, we've just done some work there with another client, and that is in the city of Lewiston. Would like to, in closing, I just want to, want to make sure that everybody understands that I'm not here to say one is better than the other. I'm here to say that we need to fund both of them to the capacity that they were last year, and I urge you to look at it and try to find the funding to get that done. They're both equally important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Dennis Ortmann, 510 Burl Drive, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. It's a privilege to be back in this room where I enjoyed Monday nights for eight years. I come tonight to talk to you a little bit about energy and enthusiasm, and part that you, that you have fed with the seeds of your money and your thought for a long time. As a member of the Lewiston Library Foundation, as a former representative of this council to the library board, and as a twelve-year member out of the fifty-some years of the Lewiston Civic Theater, it is encouraging to me to hear some of the thoughtful comments that have been made by councilors here in the room and also out of this room about quality of life in a community and how important that is. It's very clear to me, after having gone to the play last weekend and going regularly to the library, that what you have fed in this community by the way of energy and enthusiasm and people who are going to grow, both young and old, is pretty darn exciting. When I go to see those venues, I know that you have done the hard work and made the hard decisions. I appreciate the process that you are going through over these weeks, and I know that you are going to give careful consideration to funding those kinds of things in our lives that are not just roads that get us to work, that are extremely important, but there are roads to our enthusiasm and to our energy in life, whether we are five, ten, or whether we are sixty-seven. Carried on a gurney from the fire department, I know how important it is that you fund every aspect of the community. And I can tell you that there's no better way for you to carry things forward and to have a legacy than to give to the community the seeds that it takes, whether it's with the parks, whether it's with the two specific issues that I'm dealing with this evening, the library and the civic theater, places where people energize themselves, energize and enthuse others about life and learning and quality of life that make this a special community. I thank you for your thoughtful processes, and I know that you will do the best you can. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Mary Hasnerl at 3420 12th Street, Lewiston, Idaho. Thank you, Mayor Kleberg and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and city councilors. I appreciate the difficult times that you're going through with this budget, having done that with a couple of other organizations myself. And I know, I know it's difficult to make those decisions, but I'm here tonight asking you to reconsider your funding cut for Valley Vision and fund them at the forty thousand that they requested. They are one of our main economic engines for our community. If you reduce the funding for Valley Vision, you're reducing our chances for business retention and expansion and our chances for recruiting businesses to our valley. We need Valley Vision to continue to work with current businesses and recruit future businesses. They do not fill the same role as Beautiful Downtown Lewiston. The two entities have different missions and different roles for the community. If we no longer have Valley Vision, who's going to fill that role? Who's going to bring in more businesses to help fund a future budget, to create property taxes for our community? So thank you very much, and I hope you will consider that.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Liz Chavez. I live at 1521 15th Avenue, Lewiston. Mr. Mayor, councilors, I also serve on the library foundation board, and that's why I'd like to speak with you this evening. I saw in the paper, and I heard it said, that the library's golden days are over. I'm not sure what that means, unless it implies that the need for a library no longer exists in our community, and I just don't believe that that's true. And I'd like to take a moment to tell you why I appreciate the support that the council has given for the library's second floor completion and ask you to stay the course with that funding. When my parents and our family moved to Lewiston from South Idaho in 1960, I thought my parents had ruined my life. I was in the eighth grade, and I left my family and my childhood friends. Little did I know that the rich opportunities that are awaiting me would present themselves to me and my sisters by living here. One of those avenues of opportunities was having a library, not only for pleasurable reading, but for homework and research. The library in Hagerman, the town we moved from, was about the size of the area where the council is sitting right now. The books were donated, or they were on loan from the Idaho State Library System in Boise. Being able to go to the Carnegie Library in Pioneer Park was such a gift. So many books on any topic you wanted to read about or to study. The summer reading program rewarded children for reading, but it was a bonus for us. The treasure trove of books were their own incentive. As my own children began to read for themselves, they were part of the summer reading program too. But during the rest of the year, and for many years as they grew up, we made the trek up to the library on Thane every couple of weeks to renew or get new books. When our daughter moved to Santa Fe to teach autistic children, one of the first tasks that she set for herself was to get a library card. First-year teachers are often low on funds, and the library is a one-stop shop for books, movies, vintage TV shows, computer space, a place to hang out and read, work on the computer, or do research. Now in her new job in Vancouver, Washington, almost as soon as she had unpacked and set up house, she was off to the library, a good brisk walk of about a mile or so, to get a new library card. What a legacy this council and councils before you have fostered and supported by our city. I don't believe that our family story is unique. I would venture to say that this story is replicated a hundred, maybe a thousand times a month at our beautiful new library. And so I say to you again, many thanks for the budget support you have provided for completion of the second floor, and a request to hold fast, stay the course, making our Lewiston City Library a beacon for education, pleasure, leisure, and a community-centered facility that has been and can be a legacy for all of us for the years to come. Thank you so much for the time that you give to our city.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Colleen Mahoney. I am, live at 1231 15th Avenue, and I'm a trustee of the library. So I want to thank you again. I've been to several budget meetings, as well as attended this council session, and watch it on home on Channel thirteen when I'm not here. And I admire the work you do, and thank you, thank you, thank you for your commitment to the citizens of Lewiston and for your commitment to the second floor, because it is really needed. As you know, seventy-eight percent of the people who live in Lewiston have library cards. That is an amazing percent. And two years ago, when we opened the library, two thousand citizens, many of you were there, came to celebrate the grand opening, and it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. Since then, we have grown, we've developed, we have become a center for learning. If you want to learn about chocolate, I've learned chocolate, I've learned coffee, I've learned early Lewiston red light district, I've learned Title IX, I've learned all kinds of this stuff that maybe I didn't know I needed to know from the programs at the library. And they're always presented by experts in their field. The book reviews are fabulous, the book signings are wonderful, and we have computer classes for me, for anybody. First of all, you just learn basic computer, then you go to a specific program. So it's fabulous for old people as well as kids, which brings me to, last week I was volunteering at the Salvation Army Soup Kitchen. And I had a little girl, eight years old, who came with her father to eat dinner at the soup kitchen. And I said to her, she came up and asked if she could help scrape the dishes. And I said, "Well, sure, but tell me about your summer. Have you had a good summer?" And she said, "I have had a wonderful summer, because I've got to go to the library." And I said, "Wow, that's pretty exciting." And she said, "What," I said, "what did you like the best?" And she said, "Well, reading and being read to, but most of all, I liked the puppets, and I liked the animal stories, and somebody came in and talked to us about birds and animals, and she said, and I got to make the most beautiful crown." And I thought to myself, you know, the library is the great equalizer. It doesn't matter if you're living in a mansion with seven bedrooms and ten bathrooms or other way around, or if you are living in a camper trailer with your dad, the library is open to you. You don't need a ticket, you don't need to go through security, all you need to do is go through the door. We have a wonderful librarians, some are sitting here, and a great, great staff who will welcome you with open arms. All my life, I've heard that the library is, is the heart and soul of a community. Well, I hope you agree that expanding our heart and soul will be money well spent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight about the budget, and I apologize, I can't stay for the public hearing on ordinance forty-six forty.
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm Doug Mattoon, Valley Vision, forgot the most fundamental thing here, 111 Main Street, Lewiston. I'll start over. So again, I can't be here for the public hearing on ordinance forty-six forty, so I wanted to provide my comments for you early tonight and a brief statement about Valley Vision funding for fiscal year sixteen. First, I certainly appreciate the struggle that you all have to go through as your budget is developed. We support the civic theater, we support the library, we support Beautiful Downtown Lewiston. Those are all community amenities that we use as part of our marketing effort for Lewiston. However, while twenty thousand dollars may seem like a small part in your total budget, it's a very significant part of Valley Vision's budget. Please understand the community that over, the business community that oversees Valley Vision's budget is extremely frugal with limited resources available, and they monitor every expense very closely every month. More than fifty percent of our funding comes directly out of their pockets. For every dollar that the city of Lewiston invests in Valley Vision's efforts to retain and grow living wage jobs in the community, over six dollars is matching that from other sources. Regarding benefits of city of Lewiston, activity just in the last three months has included site visits from three companies that are considering Lewiston as a place to move or expand their manufacturing business. Each of these companies came to us through the Valley Vision website. In addition, we continue to provide formal responses through the Idaho Department of Commerce to other companies considering expansion options. One manufacturer that is a direct supplier to one of our local manufacturing sectors is getting very close to finalizing their plans to locate in Lewiston. This move will not only create additional jobs locally, but also make that particular sector more competitive in the marketplace. I wish I could provide you with more details, but signed nondisclosure agreements prevent me from discussing details at the direction of those individual companies. These projects all take years to develop, with the recent recession putting an even longer hold on decisions to expand or move operations. Other communities actively pursue our manufacturers, so it is important that we aggressively support the jobs who we already have, along with recruiting growing manufacturers into the valley. Please reconsider its last week's decision to eliminate twenty thousand dollars from the Valley Vision investment and the future economic health of the city of Lewiston. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Mike Feeney. I live at 631 20th Avenue, and I came, I come to you again this week. I was here last week, so you probably remember that I represent the library board of trustees as chairperson, and, but I also am someone who has lived in Lewiston almost all of my life, nearly, nearly seventy years, and have a great, great care and concern for the community. I'd like to thank you for your support to finish the library building project on the second floor. It is, after all, not just the library trustees' library, it's not just, it doesn't belong just to the staff, it doesn't belong just to the foundation, it belongs to everyone in the, in the community, and as our elected representatives, you're the stewards of that resource. So it, it really is your building. And tonight, I come to you with a little different point of view. I come to you as a, an architect, a retired architect here in Lewiston. I had thirty-four years as a, with my own office here in town, and so I, I believe I have a, an interesting and hopefully useful perspective running my own office, and I know that firsthand that the later you start a project and the more you draw it out, the more expensive it becomes. And it appears that you, you want this project to be completed. You want the building to be completed, from your past actions and words that I've heard. So it seems to me the most cost-effective thing for the taxpayers of the city of Lewiston is to retain the current budget plan for five hundred thousand dollars per year for the next two years. I would like to urge you to resist further diluting or reducing the budget amounts for the library project, and thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Mike Larson, and I live at 802 19th Street, Lewiston. And I'm here as a citizen and also as the chair for the EMS Advisory Board. And I just came to provide, hopefully, a little bit of insight on our thought process, the advisory board's thought process, when we were encouraging, placing a fee on EMS non-transports. So I just wanted to let you know that with the study that we reviewed from 2015, we recognized that in the areas surrounding Lewiston, that many, many of the EMS agencies did charge this, and the charge somewhere averaged in the two-hundred-and-ninety-some dollars. So therefore, we felt that it was appropriate as, as a board to provide the incentive to charge two hundred dollars. We felt that was a fair price, considering that on a majority of the EMS non-transports, it involved medications and/or specific treatments that don't, that don't come at a, that come at a cost. And, and our incentive for that was looking at the fact that you're, we're usually sending two different vehicles out, anywhere from four to six people, if it is a full code, you've got cardiac meds, you have procedures, real specific technical things that are done. And if it ends up not being a transport, then that's all at the cost of the taxpayers for those supplies. So we felt that two hundred dollars was a reasonable amount to place on that. So once again, it wasn't our intent to try and create something new, but instead to try and recoup some of the lost costs associated with those situations. So I just wanted to come and provide that input, and thank you guys very much for the hard process that you're going through. Thank you for your dedication in doing it, and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Minervini. I live at 220 Karen Court here in Lewiston. I am a member of the Lewiston Library Foundation. I would like to add my voice of thanks to the council for its partnership in the past, currently, and into the future in the reconstruction of the library, where you've heard some wonderful things about the library. We're very proud of our new library, and with your allocation of five hundred thousand dollars in, in the budget, along with the monies that we have raised and will continue to raise in partnership, that will assure that that second floor will be done in a reasonably short amount of time. So I just simply want to say thank you for your support and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Circle Drive. I'd just kind of like to touch on a couple of my favorite subjects, a cellphone and, you know, our pay-to, pay-to-work allowance we give them. I guess it doesn't seem like you're going to do anything about it, but I doubt if many of you councilors really have a clue of, you know, the salaries and benefits that we pay out. I can give you a list here, it's all public information, and I'll read a few. You know, let's see, we got community development, one-hundred-and-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars a year. Most of these benefits for these department heads are north of thirty thousand dollars. You know, public works, you know, one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand a year, and we're paying these people to drive to work? I mean, what are we giving our gas allowance for? What are we paying for cell phones? You know, I said, "I think, you know, you're supposed to be the steward of our tax money," and it just seems like you guys just don't really care. And as far as, you know, this half million dollar you want to pump into the library and the five hundred thousand we have left, I mean, for the firemen's insurance, I just soon see that five hundred thousand either go to a new fire department ambulance building at the airport and recall that ambulance out of Assotin County and station it up there. And I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, we do have a nice library, I probably read more books out of there than probably most of the people on library board, and that's kind of a scary thought. But, you know, it just seems like, you know, this thing's up and running, so why don't we take that half million and let's go fix these pools up? You know, Burt Lips and Orchards pools are kind of a disaster. I said, "I think they're every bit as worthy as a library as far as, you know, updating and fixing this stuff up." You know, and I guess it kind of gets me, the library boys are always down there asking for taxpayers' money, but I've yet to see any statement on how much money they have, you know, in their fund. They keep asking for taxpayers' money, but I don't see any figures from them. And I said, "And I think that's only right, if they're going to come and ask for my money, then I should see where they're at." You know, you want to, I don't have no problem matching it, but I said, "I certainly think, you know, the taxpayers definitely deserve some kind of an answer on, you know, where's their money and how much is there?" Like I said, there's, you know, there's some things you need to really think about, you know, as far as, you know, like I said, these pools certainly need updated, and there's certainly nothing wrong with, you know, building this fire station, ammunition, because we certainly need something there at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Mayor Kleberg, members of the council, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Marsh, city staff. My name is Mike Tatko. I live at 1302 10th Avenue in Lewiston. I come to you before, before you tonight as a representative of Vista Utilities, 803 Main, and also as past president and current board member of Valley Vision. I'd like to start by thanking you for your continued investment in Valley Vision. It is an investment in economic development in our valley. It's not a contribution or a sponsorship or a donation, it's an investment. And like all investments, we always hope there's a return. I was disappointed, however, to, to read that the city of Lewiston's investment is potentially being cut from forty to twenty thousand. I'm not going to stand here and, and beg you to redo the numbers and get it back up to, to forty thousand. You have your, your reasons and your budget figures for voting six to one at the last meeting to decrease your investment, and I'd like to, to thank Councilor Randall for your continued belief in, in what we do. I would, however, like to take just a minute to talk a little bit about economic development and the different facets of it. To the man or woman on the street, to the uninformed, the economic development means really just one thing, and that's the recruitment of new business. You know, where's, where's the Olive Garden? When are we going to get a Target? You know, when are we going to develop that eyesore downtown that used to be Twin City Foods? That's what they think about is new, a new business. But really, economic development is more than just that. It means expansion of current business, and really, most importantly, perhaps, it means the retention of current business. And without going into specifics, I can assure you that in the last year, Valley Vision has worked very hard behind the scenes on the retention of some very important businesses that I don't think any of us would like to see leave the valley. You know, sadly, economic development does not include all... You know, sadly, economic development does not include always a scoreboard or a spreadsheet that shows victories and lights up in, in bright lights when things go well and, and we, we get a victory. You know, I don't know what all of the, the counselor members do for a living, but I do know that Counselor Dr. Collins is a track and field and cross-country coach in intercollegiate athletics. Each and every time his team participates, he and they are graded by a stopwatch and a, and a tape measure. So there's a scoreboard there. So I, I can give Dr. Collins a pass for, for maybe not agreeing on the vote. Counselor Blakely, for instance, probably should know better than anyone that scoreboards are not really the true judge of things. You know, what do, what does he tell his clients when the Dow Jones goes down 200, 200 points in a day? I would hope that he probably tells them to have patience. The market will rebound and our investment will eventually pay dividends. So I would offer in closing that regardless of your investment, whatever it may be, please have patience in what Valley Vision is accomplishing. We're working closely with the three ports in the valley, the Chamber, Clearwater Economic Development, Southeast Washington Economic Development, and even the city of Lewiston's own regional initiative planner, Ms. Gilbert, to better this community and to retain the businesses we have, to expand the businesses we have, and to lure new businesses to the valley. Hopefully, by all of us working together, we will, we will persevere and we will prevail and our, our investment will pay dividends. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. What you do is appreciated and hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jackie Wibler, 1512 8th Avenue. Mayor and councilors, I am a Lewiston Library Foundation Board Member, but most importantly, I'm the mom of Jane, one of tonight's meeting's youngest attendants. As a parent, I'd like to ask you to continue to support the library. We really appreciate all your support and I'd like you to support the library with the full amount indicated in the 2016 budget. And thank you for all of your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Michael, 1448 8th Street, Lewiston, Idaho. Just a couple of thoughts off the top of my head, especially about this Valley Vision thing. I think they also get money from the port as well. And if I'm not mistaken, this is private business guys and I haven't looked into it, but if I'm a private business guy and I see a business that may be coming to town that competes with me, I may subtly steer them elsewhere. If the port's giving them money, they may subtly get stirred, turn to the port. So I would suggest you keep public money out of that and I think that's a good idea and let those private business guys do what they do. But if you're supporting stuff that really isn't beneficial for all, and I don't know for sure, like I'm saying, that's just off the top of my head, I don't agree with it. I did come tonight to talk about the Urban Renewal Association. I've attended a few of their meetings and I'm a little disturbed. Their last meeting, they, and I'm okay with this project, there's a project out in north Lewiston where they're going to develop a road, right? Well, they hired a engineering company to do, do the plans for that. And the problem with that is that there was a part of the agreement that says, look, we're being sued by the county and we may have to give these funds back, so this contract may be null and void, right? Okay, no problem with that. But a month ago, they also signed a private contract with McCann Incorporated. And there is no stipulation there about we may lose the lawsuit to the county and we'll get our money back. In fact, the contract reads the other way. If the McCanns cancel the contract at any time, they get to keep the money they got from the Urban Renewal Association. To me, I, that, there's a Valley Vision person that also sits on the Urban Renewal Association Board. Bob Bakie sits on the board. He can't vote on every issue because, you know, his company takes money from the McCanns. And I'm not saying there's anything going wrong there. Well, Bob, if that's not true, I'm fine with it not being true.
That is, that's inaccurate, so.
Okay. Well, from my understanding, and that's wrong, but you've got to look at who's doing the plane and who the players are and where the connections are. And that is your guys' job. And a lot of these guys, they scrub their faces and come up here, but I know the library board fights like cats and dogs, the Civic Theater Board fights like cats and dogs. You know, find out what's going on there. And I don't have any problem giving them the money, but I would look at these issues very closely and see if you want to keep a URA board like it is or not get a couple more private citizens on there and take the, Port went off, the Port owns two, two of the investment areas of the URA, Port has property in. So I mean, it, it seems to benefit a very few small groups of people when it's taxpayer money and it's over a million dollars per area and these people aren't publicly collected officials. So I mean, those are some things to think about. I'd scrub up that group if I were you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's right. We are a team. Chris Hayes and Pat Nuxall, Lewiston-Nesperse County Airport Authority Board, 406 Borough Ave., Suite 301. And just here tonight to encourage all of the members to support the ARF station and the joint ARF station with the firefighters and keep that project moving forward. Just a little background for that project for the group, the FAA is requiring that we get a new ARF truck and it will not fit in the current fire station. Also, that fire station needs lots of updating, doesn't function well for the group. And we would like to see the new ARF station be built in time for that truck. The design work is set to take place this coming fiscal year with construction following the next year. And we're hoping that those funds will be available from the city as well as the FAA and our portion of the match at the airport. So I hope that you folks keep on track with that. Have any questions for us?
Question?
Would you like to add anything?
Mr. Nuxall, you got something to add?
I could always, I could always use up some time, but no. I think it's laid out, we're, we are on track with the FAA funding for the design of the airport or the ARF facility and in 2016, fiscal year 2016, and construction in 2017.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you, gentlemen.
Reasonable accommodation. Making a request. I, I'd like to do the, the public statement from, from, from here. I will make the public statement from here.
Test, got it? Sound, 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 got it? Is that a yes or a no? Yes. Do not grab me if I fall. Don't touch me, it will hurt me if you do. I have controlled falls. I can stand, this isn't a come-to-Jesus moment. I also can't walk very far, can't use a manual wheelchair. I am Eric Peterson, that night, I, 904 7th Ave. If I go down and go out, I request a reasonable accommodation when I come back to continue, continue, con, con.
Mr. Peterson is okay and he can hear us.
He didn't hear his head or anything.
And I guess when he comes around, if he wants to continue briefly, we will allow that.
Yeah, we can accommodate that, yes.
True. Do we have any other citizen comments this evening? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Next item up is our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read consent agenda unless anybody wants to move something. Yes.
My understanding is you've found there's a discrepancy between one paper on the surface roofing.
I was going to ask for item C to be moved.
Okay. Item C.
Okay. Item C will now become active agenda, item E. Is there anything else? So I'll entertain the motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any motion been made in second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Approving the minutes of the August 3, 2015 work session and the August 6, 2015 joint city, Nespris County, Assotin County, City of Clarkston special meeting, accepting the minutes of the July 16, 2015 Historic Preservation Commission and approving the bid award for the standby rated generator will number five to Twin City Electricians Incorporated of Clarkston, Washington in the amount of $76,665.
Okay, councilors, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Okay, we'll move on to active agenda. And this is a second reading of ordinance 4642, which is amending ordinance number 4612, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014 and ending September 30, 2015, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston in the sum of $3,407,030. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4642 for the second time by, roll call?
No.
Oh.
Only when you approve it.
Okay. Thank you. I was waiting for the cue card.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4642 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending ordinance number 4612, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014 and ending September 30, 2015, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho in the sum of $3,407,030 and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. I'll move on to ordinance 4640 for the second reading, to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4640 for the second time.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. It's your discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Pro Tem Johnson.
I'd offer an amendment to the budget. I'd like to propose that we move the, we take the recreation specialist and the public information officer off the table and appropriate $20,000 back to Valley Vision.
A second, Doc.
May I ask for that one more time, please?
Sure. The motion is to amend the budget to move the recreation specialist and the public information officer off the table and then appropriate $20,000 back to the Valley Vision fund. Mr. Mayor? Further discussion?
Sure. We're in discussion now, so.
The reason for the amendment is, I believe, you know, the, the public information officer, we can have a work session on that and discuss, kind of clarify and fine-tune some of the responsibilities there. At the last meeting, I know it was, it was brought up that there's talk about an ADA role. I believe that that can be incorporated under community development, possibly specifically under the planner regional initiatives position.
Okay.
Reasonable accommodation.
This was not planned. There's a, in politics, there's something called a rule of slack, which is how much will the other side give to accommodate your request? I saw it beautifully presented the last council meeting by Clinton Daniels. And I saw a magnificent display of politics in actual function when there was back and forth deliberate thoughts and presentations. It was well done. I also knew that when I heard ADA compliance officer, which granted, the city doesn't act fast, but it seems like 22 years is enough time for a city to act, that because you only discovered there was an ADA compliance issue where you have been in violation of the AD laws for 22 years, you didn't discover it till this spring, so you're going to delay dealing with it till next year. I didn't plan on that happening and being discussed, but that's what's occurring. You're delaying once again. It was not clear ADA was at all in the public, the, the, off, the, I have, prompting is fine, the, the.
Public information officer.
Thank you. Phil, please free to, to fill in those, because I have a memory issue, it's hard. It, this ADA compliance stuff is not simple. You read it, it looks easy. We've had six dang good people on a commission working since last November realizing the problem was no top ownership. I'm seeing in action, once again, let's delay this till later, let's whatever. You're going to get sued. You are in violation. There's no two ways about it. All someone needs to do is file that complaint. Then all this adjusting and playing around you're talking about, you're going to have to do something else because you're going to be told you got to use your money here now. You don't believe it? Go look at those settlement things. It's like foolish when you have a problem, oh, I'll just delay it down the road again and I'm hearing it. I heard it the last time when I heard the plane. Is this part ADA or is it not? Jeez, make it clear. If you're going to screw it up, I shouldn't say that. I'm not politically correct. I commend all these, 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 these early, people who are. They're brilliant. I'm not. I'm just bloody honest. Take ownership of the bloody problem. You want to tell me to shove it? Tell it to my face. Don't tell it to all these persons with disabilities. You've been, the city's been doing that for 22 years. Why would you have a boot go 23 years? I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that to address that, that my amendment is kicking the can down the road. It's actually addressing the issue. My specific request was to roll the ADA role under the community development so it would actually address it immediately. It would actually change the planner regional initiatives position to incorporate that role. And they can go out.
You can put that under if anyone except city manager because you've got no top ownership. Put it down under if you're a person. Have a police chief haul me out.
I'm not going to do that. You know it. Counselor Blakely.
I support RJ's amendment. I think after some thought about this, I would like to see the 20,000 put back into Valley Vision, their request. They've shown a lot of public support. They put up a lot of public support. I, I do want to make the comment going forward, though, I think it would be appropriate for Valley Vision at some point in time to keep the city council more involved with what's going on. Sometimes I do feel like I'm hearing from an organization that's more like the CIA or the NSA and there's a lot going on behind the scenes, but it's, I know you can't make a lot of public disclosure, but there are some ways to let us know that there's more going on in the valley than what, than what we maybe know about. Because if we knew more about that, I believe the city council could possibly be involved and be helpful. And so that's my encouragement. Let's put the money back there. But again, as we're, as going forward, one of the contractual agreements is going to be in the future, and correct me, Jen, if I'm, if I'm wrong, that the money that we'll be giving to Valley Vision will specifically be used for projects benefiting the city of Lewiston in some contractual form, correct?
Yeah.
And so there'll have to be some documentation. And so there'll have to be some documentation a year from now showing that. And so that's, 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 that's important. And so I, hopefully that is the venue where we can see, the taxpayers can see that they're getting some value for their money. And that's the question that we get asked all the time. Show us value for our money. On the issue of moving the recreational specialists out of the budget, that's my fault. I won't, I, I take some blame for that. I, I probably should've noticed that in the last hearing. I would've made that recommendation, and I, I failed to do that, and that was caught by another counselor. Thank you very much for catching that. And, and the last comment is, I don't think we're kicking ADA down the street at all. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. And if there is a department that could probably handle it best, it would be community development. Community development is on the forefront of those rules, knows the laws, and probably is where the laws sit. And so...
Welcome to fights between directors.
Thank you. I have the floor.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. And, and I think that would be a worthy place to, to put that position. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be parked there forever, but I think it's a good place to start, and the city of Lewiston is making a good, a good faith effort.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Collins.
Initially, I'd say I tentatively would support the amendment. Is it okay if I ask Mr. Barker a question about that recreational specialist?
Sure.
Mr. Barker, can you give me a, just a general idea of, of the effect of taking that position out, what we might see or might not see?
We'd probably see a reduction in some of our program offerings. It's, it's a piece that I wanted to incorporate into a little bit of a reorganization within my department.
Okay.
Restructuring up some duties. My workload is extremely overloaded at this point. I've been doing high frequency disposition as the assistant director and director for about four years now. And that was something I agreed to initially to take on as part of the cost savings when we mustered that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel.
I think, oh, Jessica, yeah.
Counselor Malamal.
Do you wanna talk about recreation specialist?
No.
Okay. I just want Mr. Bennett's input on the moving of the ADA coordinator to community development, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
No, not a problem. I was gonna ask the same question.
Thank you. Of course, the American Disabilities Act coordinator position is one that's sort of a, a position that affects all aspects of the city, all facilities. It's an administrative position. I don't know that it's particularly benefited by being any one department or another. The laws that we're talking about are federal laws. Many of them deal with accommodations, either in facilities or in programs. So inputs required from a lot of different departments because it affects so many different I have seen the position parked in a lot of different departments. HR, community development, building, those are probably the more common ones that you'll see in ADA coordinator. However, also if you want overall management of the position, often frequently you will see that position under the city manager's office, working directly with and for the city manager to provide services across the board. I would envision the same kind of approach for a public information officer if one were approved and put in the budget by the council. That seems to be the most logical way to do that so that a position that affects so many different departments and aspects of the city has a centralized control. So that's part of the discussion I would assume that we would have if the council wants to look at that position in greater detail.
Okay. Counselor Daniel.
So first, because Valley Vision is included in this amendment, I, I do need to disclose I had coffee on Friday with Mr. Matoon, and he did pay for my coffee before I had a chance to purchase it. So I'll just disclose that. That's not gonna affect my decision making.
That'll override?
As, as far as the amendment, I, I think Pro Tem's proposed, proposed amendment doesn't say that the ADA issue will be moved in community development. He was just throwing out an idea where it could go, that we will be addressing it in some, some capacity. I, I do support the amendment. I, I think it's a good idea. I don't think we fully really talked about what role the PIO would have, what the impact would be long-term. We, we had a brief discussion, but we didn't really go into it. So I, I do think it's good to put it off for this year. So I, I will support this amendment.
Well, if I may, I, I think this is something that we've been talking about, and like Mr. Peterson mentioned, about kicking the can down the road. We've been talking about public information officer for quite some time. And I think it would be a benefit to the city to have that, now whether that can be incorporated, ADA compliance and a PIO under the direct supervision of the city manager. I don't, I don't have any problem going down that road. We've made an amendment at the last meeting to include those three different, well, public information officer, recreation specialist, stand the sidewalk vault program actually was moved into the base budget at a zero percent. So I, I do agree with Mr. Peterson. I think we're asking for it. If we don't fund the position or fund a position that we can work that into, now I've had a brief chat with Mr. Bennett today, and he had some ideas, I think he had some ideas on where the ADA position would really come into play and, and how we could fund it for this year, so.
Yeah, I think if you separate the ADA position from the public information officer, setting that aside for the time being, in the long run, it may be that there's a economy of scale by combining those positions because the, the bulk of the activity of the ADA coordinator is gonna take place in the next one or two years. Then things are gonna kinda quiet down and even out once the transition plan is completed and the facilities inventory is completed. But an ADA coordinator position alone, there is training available for that, specific training, and the actual tasks that the ADA coordinator needs to perform, doing the transition plan and having the inventory facility, of facilities done, isn't gonna be that, that daunting. It's something that's doable, and I think we can do it probably for a lot less than what the cost is that we see reflected in the budget. So we do have options. You know, I, as much as you, would like to see the public information officer position be adopted into the budget and become a, a position, because I think it could do so much for the city as far as promotion and marketing and getting our message out to the public. But it's not inextricably wedded to the ADA coordinator position. The two can be done together, but they can also be done separately. And since the ADA coordinator position seems to be the more urgent of the two right now, I'm sure that we can do that and fund it and get that person trained and start making progress this year on the transition plan and the inventory of facilities.
So...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Randall.
I would like to make an amendment to the amendment. What I would propose is that the, we not consider the public information officer position this year, but we replace that with an ADA compliance coordinator. And what, the amount that we've got listed is for seventy-two thousand. When I looked up on the internet with the pay scale, which is, uses big data to determine the wages of different positions across the United States, the public information officer's position was a median salary of fifty-four thousand. So I would, would recommend we replace that seventy-two thousand with fifty-four thousand, and it would be for an ADA compliance officer.
Yeah, but is that straight salary or is that salary and benefits?
Salary and benefits.
Right, that's the total cost. When we look at the seventy-two thousand dollars in the budget for the PIO, that's a cost inclusive of all compensation.
Yes, I understand that.
So the fifty-four is the same thing. That's what the council referring to is, he's talking about salary and benefits.
Okay, so we're on the high side of things.
Yeah, so base salary of, you know, in the low forties.
Okay. Counselor Blakey.
That's a question for Jenna. What does an entry level attorney, deputy attorney, deputy attorney, entry level attorney coming out of law school, working for the county, county, would be making?
I believe NESP, I wanna say, is starting around mid-fifties.
Mid-fifties?
But counties typically pay lesser, less than cities.
My point is, the reason I'm asking this question is, um, and it's kinda along with Jed's going with this, is we can almost, originally we were talking about information officer salary package, whole deal at seventy. It's almost like we can get an attorney, an entry level attorney fresh out of law school.
And that's salary only?
Well, I understand, I understand that salary.
Okay.
And benefit too. My point is, are there, are there attorneys who are going into entry level, entry level attorneys who are even working at less salary than that?
Depending on the organization, yes.
I'm just wondering about the, you know, question about qualifications and getting one schooled up.
Well, you don't need an attorney to do the ADA coordinator position.
I understand we don't need an attorney, but my, my, my point is, is we, we might be able to hire an attorney, someone who has a law degree for the salary that we're proposing, who may wanna apply. And we may wanna, see, rather than get someone's, somebody with a bachelor's in human resources, we may be able to find an attorney out there who has further education and, and could fill that job at the, at the salary levels that Mr. Randall is proposing.
Well, I'll be gonna go back to Mr. Randall, since he was making an amendment to the amendment.
Hmm.
And he made a motion, I didn't know if I heard a second?
I don't believe it's been seconded.
Okay. And would you like to restate your amendment?
What I would like to do is not include the public information officer, but replace it with the ADA compliance officer at a salary of fifty-four thousand dollars instead of seventy-two.
Okay.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
So we have a motion and a second. Extra discussion?
I guess I said what I wanted to say, but I jumped the gun. I apologize for that. I do think, you know, if we do go that route, we don't wanna limit the qualifications of what we're looking for, and we may be able to find a, even a more qualified person. My concern, my only, my concern with Jed's, Jed's motion is potentially we're creating now another full-time position this year and potentially another full-time position next year if we, if we continue to pursue an information officer. And so I think we have to keep in mind the, the budget implications there. I asked the question, would, could the ADA person be a halftime position? Is, is that a, is that a potential? Could that job be done at a, at a hundred percent, at a hundred percent if there is such thing as full-time, whereas a full-time person whose only focus is ADA?
I would guess the answer to that would be yes. I mean, I, I can't tell you for an absolute certainty, but, you know, if you're looking at a position to accomplish the specific goals now of completing the transition plan and completing the inventory, I think it's, it's very conceivable that you could do that as a halftime position. Now, the only question is, could you get someone to do that for a halftime position that was qualified and had the experience that you're looking for in order to put such a plan together? That's the only caveat that I would have. Remember, after the first couple of years, the majority of the work's going to be done, and the duties of the ADA coordinator are gonna change from getting the plan done and getting the inventory done to more of compliance issues within the organization. And that's something that could conceivably be merged into a different, another position within the city. So the first couple of years are the most critical.
Okay. Pro Tem?
So, Mr. Mayor, if, if that could be a part-time position, then would it be possible for us to reorganize some priorities and streamline that role into another position that currently exists in the city?
Anything is, is possible. I mean, that's something that, for the council to discuss. What we're actually, though, we're looking at here, though, is whatever we're gonna do, we need to make sure that if, if there are funds that are needed for that, that they're in the budget.
Okay. I guess, you know, we're, we're on that thin line of where we're deciding who's gonna do what, when it's really, we're the policy setters. We set the policy for the city through the fiscal process, the budget, and all that. The city manager, we have hired to run the city and to be the, basically the personal director of the city. So I, I'm not in a position where I think we should be saying that person at that department can probably take on these duties and those duties. That's his decision. That's not our decision. Our decision is right here. Do we wanna include the position or not? That's, that's really what we're, what we're talking about here. Are we gonna keep a chunk of money in there so that we can get going with an ADA compliance officer or not? Whether we call it public information officer or we just change that title to ADA compliance officer, and down the road, like Mr. Bennett says, as that job doesn't have quite the demands as the, the transition policy or plan gets in effect and approved and all that, then that's quite possible that person would be a, you know, a public information officer as well as the ADA compliant officer. So I think that's, that's the more pertinent question. So we, okay, Counselor Daniel.
I'm not in support of this amendment. I, I think we're more likely to get a higher caliber person by, I'll, I'll leave it up to Mr. Bennett if we rolled it into a position that currently exists with someone who is probably better skilled, 'cause it sounds like the salary is fifty-four thousand, or is that salary plus benefits?
Median.
And that includes benefits?
No, that was just salary.
So, which is, you know, when you figure out the fringe, you're probably up at about seventy thousand.
Seventy-two thousand.
Yeah, give or take.
Well, still, it sounded, the very little that we've talked about, I mean, realistically, since Mr. Peterson gave the presentation a hell of months ago, we actually haven't, we were all kind of, for lack of a better term, we were all blindsided with his report, and we actually haven't had another meeting about ADA compliance since, and I, I think we should at least do that before we just start throwing out new positions. I, I think we can give direction to Mr. Bennett, saying we want the ADA compliance issue to be on the very next work session agenda so we can discuss it and to figure out where we need to go and what roles may or may not be needed and whether or not we need a new position at all.
Okay, then I guess it still begs the question, council's pleasure, do we want to, to consider keeping that position, whatever position it is? But there right now is a place holding of seventy-two thousand, and it could be up or down, but keeping that in our, in our base budget at zero percent. And to me, I think it makes sense to keep that there. Recreation specialist, okay, if we've decided, and that could, that position, if we eliminate that, that's, you know, that could certainly go and help to fund that one position, but having it on the budget, in the budget, to me, I think makes sense. 'Cause that way we're not kicking it down the road for next year or scrambling and robbing money from a different department for something else because we do find out, yes, we have to have this person in, now how are we gonna fund it? Next.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Randall.
I'd like to ask Jenna a question. Jenna, if we don't fill, we don't name a position but keep the money in for a potential position, can we come back and amend the budget and say it will be this position?
I believe so.
Just put in council contingency.
Yeah.
You could do that. Counselor Daniel's correct.
Yeah, after, after we have the discussion.
In a contingency fund.
Over what, who we wanna put in there.
Okay. Counselor Blakey?
True. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Push came to shove, I've, I've heard the mayor talk, I've heard the mayor say, you know, again, personnel decisions are yours, and I'm hearing Counselor Daniels say something I think that I could support. Push comes to shove, within our current personnel structure of the city of Lewiston, if the lawsuit showed up at the doorstep tomorrow, could you find somebody within the, the personnel, of the available staff in the city of Lewiston to start to do that job, to start to do the responsibilities of ADA?
He seriously, seriously doesn't get what's gonna happen.
I still have the floor.
Mr. Peterson?
Within a relatively short period of time, yes. Not instantly. Within a relatively short period of time, yes. Not instantly, because you're going to have to find someone who has at least some training in being an ADA coordinator in order to start to put the, the rudimentary aspects of a transition plan and to do the inventory analysis. Begging that, you might try to hire it done by a consultant who has had some experience doing that, but you're going to pay for that.
Correct.
Yeah. But yes, I think within a relatively short period of time, yes, someone could be brought up to speed, or we could find someone who could begin the work. And, and the most important thing is to get started on it now.
Can you ship the money from all the other firms?
Mr. Peterson?
Cover what that, the damages will be done to the city and they got to get compliance on? You can remove it by the police.
That's the last, that's the last helper.
Stop threatening us. I can remove you. Maybe we ought to.
Go ahead.
I'm just...
Maybe we ought to.
You know, Eric, I'm sorry, sir.
That's the last thing I'm saying.
Thank you.
May I follow up my question, please?
Yes.
Jenna, in following up on Mr. Bennett's reply there, then, would that be a show of good faith? If we documented that...
Jesus, sorry.
Would that be a show of good faith, if, again, the lawsuit shows up, that we are making an effort, that, that, at the, at the department level, city manager level, he is reassigning a position or reassigning a personnel staff change to focus on, you know, half-time, full-time, whatever ADA responsibilities?
Are you talking about after a lawsuit is filed?
Well, yeah, after and during, and it's, it's a show of good faith that we are, yeah, maybe we, we didn't do a good job for twenty-two years, but because of Mr. Peterson bringing it to our attention, we are now acting on it?
Well, I think the timing is important. If it's after a lawsuit is filed, the DOJ is already going to be involved. And I think just reassigning a person probably isn't going to make them go away.
Is hiring a person going to make them go away?
I think hiring a person is a lot stronger showing of good faith.
Okay.
Okay, we clear on that? Okay, so we're on the amendment to the amendment from Council Randall, which was, straighten me out again. I've got, not PIO, but ADA coordinator.
Yeah.
Or...
Can I clarify? Because I thought I heard Councilor Randall say, is the fifty-four thousand total or salary only? Because that was part of the amendment.
The key is, is the seventy-two thousand the entire package? Is that seventy-two thousand?
Yes.
Everything.
That's the total package.
Man on the heads, everything.
Yeah.
Well, then we can leave the seventy-two thousand...
Okay.
Shifting titles.
Just shifting titles.
Okay.
Bob, Councilor Blakie, sorry.
That's fine, Bob Borges.
You seconded that motion, correct, before? It sounds like Councilor Randall's a little, changing his motion a little bit now.
A little.
Because originally it was, replace PIO with ADA coordinator with, at fifty-four thousand, and it's now changed, leave it at the seventy-two thousand. So I would take that as a, kind of a clarifying your motion. Would that still have the second?
I would still support the second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we clear on that?
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Councilor Daniel?
I, I still oppose this. I mean, we're, we're just throwing out this number, this fifty-four thousand you got from a, what, it was an online site that said the median was four?
Online compensation.
Does that compare nationwide?
Yes.
So that, that includes places like New York and the Hamptons and LA. So, you know, I'd like, we haven't even really actually studied what that price would be, what it should be for our market. I really think this position, we should discuss it at the next work session, what we need to do and how we need to do it. And until then, I, I would, from a policy standpoint, as a council, we would direct Mr. Bennett to start looking at his staff to figure out who could encompass this. He, Mr. Bennett even mentioned that in, in other places, it's the HR department. In some places, it's community development. I think, I think the previous statements before, that the transition plan, we can find somebody that's currently working for the city to take over this function for now.
Okay. I guess, just, again, from the budget standpoint where we're at, I don't have a huge problem leaving that, those funds in for now. Doesn't mean we have to spend them. I mean, that's the, the...
Government.
Ordinance forty, I understand, Councilor Daniel, but, you know, ordinance forty-six, forty-two is appropriating money that we got additional over the year, which was over and above what we had originally budgeted last year when we did our budget process. So, you know, by the end of the year, maybe that money's not going to be used up. It doesn't mean it has to be spent, but it gives us the spot to do something with, give Mr. Bennett the flexibility to see as he fits, sees fit on how that position is going to be staffed. So, that's all I'm looking at. So, yes, pro temp?
But we don't have to set aside the money for that, if I'm hearing you correctly. I mean, we have to, we can have a work session about it, fine-tune the details, and then if we feel like we need to create it, we can create it, even if it's outside of this budget. So we don't have to set the money aside.
We're getting, kind of shaking heads.
We cannot increase your budget.
No, but if, sorry.
Yes.
If it was, if we deemed we absolutely needed this position, because the sky was going to fall, if we didn't, if we didn't have this separate paid position, we could pull out of reserves for one year and pay it back with levy amount next year.
For the seventy-two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, you can amend your budget next year and take funds, carry over the funds from reserves.
Okay.
You may do that.
Councilor Daniel's on it.
Sorry. I'm still in favor of a public information officer. I always have been. I don't know, I'm sure many of us are on Facebook. The fire department created a Facebook page in, over the last week, and it's already amassed somewhere near six hundred plus Facebook likes. It's been a great way of them connecting with the community and keeping people abreast of, you know, our firefighters that have been going up to fight the Clearwater complex fire. I think that's just one of the job duties that the public information officer could encompass, would be social media and creating a more transparent City of Lewiston with our citizens that are, you know, ones that are here tonight. But I think it also could encompass an ADA coordinator as well. I don't think there's any argument that we don't need this position. Mr. Peterson has brought forward that we need somebody to have this. It's been twenty-two years and we've had nothing. So I, I don't think that, you know, I understand your sentiments, Councilor Daniel, but I, I think we do need to move forward with something set aside, ready to have this position and move forward at the briskest pace as we possibly can.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Randall?
One of the other possibilities besides taking money out of the reserves is maybe setting the seventy-two thousand aside and just putting it in the council's contingency fund. We could do that. And then, once we come up with a position, we can use that money for that position.
Council Blakie?
I would be in favor of one of those options, of either putting it in a contingency or putting it into, or taking out of reserves through an amended budget process. I would like to, I would like to have a work session or two for further discussion about what the actual job description of the public information officer will be. Jesse brings up a whole nether realm of stuff that I hadn't thought about. Another realm of what the job responsibilities. And, and the reality of it is, the reality of it is, as social media and the way we contact people changes, that person's job will continue to evolve and probably change over time. And so I, there are some further questions I think that I'd, I'd like to have in a, in a work session to discuss that position. But in the meantime, though, back to, if we could find within our staffing an ADA, a person who could do the ADA responsibilities, and do it legitimately and do it professionally, I would be supportive of that. At the same, at the same time, putting the money aside so that we have some time to further discuss what the role of the, of the information officer would be, and if that person finally evolves into a combination ADA, 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 what am I going to say?
EIO.
NP, yeah, exactly. If we, if they, if it evolves into that. I just think we need some, I'm not sandbagging, I just think we need some time so we all can fully flesh out all the ideas here.
Councilor Daniel?
Council Blakie, if you make that amendment after, if this fails, I'll probably support that, put it aside. But right now, the amendment on the floor is just creating this...
Correct.
...position based on national median salary. So I get what you're trying to do, and I...
Let me ask the city attorney, is it, is it possible for Councilor Randall to further clarify his motion to specify that the money's be gone into the council contingency, and then that would give the council the opportunity to then decide the appropriate position to fund from it?
If Councilor Randall wants to clarify that, and if it would still have a second.
Well, I'm willing to just say no position, but we're saving the money for a position, potential position.
And putting it into the council contingency.
Yes, and putting it in the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The city clerk clarified that the motion was actually to eliminate the PIO position. So I think we're looking in kind of at a different motion.
Well, it was not PIO, but changing it to ADA.
Yeah, to eliminate PIO and change it to ADA. So now you're talking about putting the money aside for PIO or ADA or a combination. I think that's kind of a different motion. So perhaps the council should vote on this motion, and then, depending on how that goes, go to another motion.
Call question.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
Okay.
So now we're back, we're back to our first amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Which was remove recreation specialist and public information officer. So, Council Randall?
I would like to make a motion to amend, to put the seventy-two thousand assigned for a public information officer into the council's contingency fund for further study.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
I'll just make a quick comment.
Yes, Council?
I'll begrudgingly support this, this time. However, I still hope that the position itself can be filled by somebody within staff, and the seventy-two thousand can either go back into reserves over time, or maybe it'll alleviate next year's budget a little bit.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sure we understand from the context of the discussion, but it wasn't actually in the motion to put the seventy-two thousand into the contingency fund. But is it to fund a position of either PIO, ADA, or a combination?
Or not.
Or not?
Or not.
Okay, because that part wasn't actually in there what it would be for.
Correct. Are we okay on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify so the record's clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Council Collins?
Mr. Mayor, back to the original amendment, if I remember correctly, and I'm just trying to recall here, that did include putting twenty thousand back into Valley Vision, is that correct?
Yes, it did.
Correct.
Okay. Now I have another question that's a policy and procedures, and I'm just trying to think out of the box here. Is it possible for us to, or maybe a better question is, if we do not hire this position until January, do we have some cost savings that now that money can be used elsewhere? Can we dictate and say that we are going to hire this position halfway through our budget cycle, thereby saving that money, putting it into Valley Vision or anything else that we want to?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I should also add that I did have a cup of coffee with Valley Vision associates, so I wanted to publicly disclose that. It won't affect my vote.
It was a dollar fifty, boy.
I wonder why you're buying coffee for a dollar fifty?
I'll disclose that I'm having a meeting with Mr. Mattoon tomorrow morning, but I'm off the hook, because we haven't met yet, so... Okay, so we're all clear on this amendment?
No, where, where are we on the amendment now? Are we voting?
Seventy-two K into the council contingency to perhaps fund a PIO, ADA, or none of the above.
And so we are amending Counselor Johnson's amendment?
Yeah, well, again, we'll get back to that.
Yes.
So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries seven to zero. So now we're back to the first one, which was remove recreation specialist and public information officer, which I think we just did, and add twenty thousand back into Valley Vision. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
The motion has now been amended not to remove the PIO, but to set the funds aside in the contingency fund.
Well, I think, by what we just did, so it...
Right.
In essence, changes pro temps.
Right. So it would be removing the recreational specialist, putting seventy-two thousand in the contingency fund.
Mm-hmm.
For a PIO and/or ADA coordinator, and appropriating an additional twenty thousand to Valley Vision. That's now the amendment on the floor.
Okay. With a proper accounting at the end of the fiscal year, I might add. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that carries seven to zero. So, we're going to go ahead and head our discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Randall?
Are we now going to add some more amendments, possibly?
Oh, knock yourself out?
Okay. Or not.
Or not.
Anyway, I was going to make the amendment that, since down here at the very bottom of the page that Mr. Bennett and Dan were so kind to make us here for our last five amendments.
Mm-hmm.
Down at the bottom, the very bottom of the page, it says, "Fire station remodel will still need a hundred and seventy-six thousand for additional funding to be completed." At a 1.8 million minus eight forty-seven thou, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand minus seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, that's for fiscal year seventeen. And you'll have, still have a leftover of a hundred and seventy-six thousand. They'll have to figure out where we can come up with money. My suggestion is, we take two hundred thousand out of the library, which would leave them three hundred thousand for this year, sixteen, and put that extra two hundred thousand into seventeen to cover that.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Any clarification on the motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Could you clarify, sir?
Sure. On, you got, you got the sheet here that they, they made? Yeah, there you go. On fiscal year sixteen, on amendment five, what I'm asking to do is remove two hundred thousand from the library five hundred thousand. And the reason being, now it's very bottom of the page in small print, it says, "Fire station remodel will still need a hundred and seventy-six thousand of additional funding to be completed." And that's what I'm covering with that two hundred thousand. For fiscal year seventeen.
Okay. We have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I was confused about when Council Randall says fiscal year seventeen. Because we can only work on 2016's budget.
I know, but that's, it was the explanation for taking out the two hundred thousand.
We're kind of in a two-year budget cycle, but, yeah, we are really only dealing with sixteen.
Yeah. So basically, take two hundred thousand out of the library.
Put it toward the fire station.
Three hundred thousand would be left.
Okay.
From the proposed budget.
Thank you.
So, yes?
Just a point. The, the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars is, of course, that's referring to the fire station remodel, which is proposed to be funded over the next three fiscal years, actually. And that's what this period covers, even though we're not really dealing with that during this budget year. But I need to bring to your attention that by restoring the money to Valley Vision and not funding the recreation specialist position, that achieves a savings of twenty-six thousand dollars for the next, each of the next three years. So that's seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that reduces that amount to, from a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, potentially down to ninety-eight thousand dollars. So, and then at that time, you know, we'll need to find additional savings for, for that position. But as I've, I think I've said privately to some of the council members, even though in the spreadsheet, you, she, you... you see that it says we'll need a 3% increase in FY 17, we need a 3% increase in FY 18, it's not expected that that's actually what's going to happen, because what's going to happen as that process goes forward is we're going to be looking internally within the budget to find cost savings within the budget that brings that number down. So we're not, so that we won't be looking at a 3% increase. Maybe we'll be looking at a 1.5% increase. So those numbers are fluid, and we'll be working over that period of time to assure that we've got a way to provide the funding at the time the fire station needs it, when the project is under construction, so that we can make that final payment, pay our share of the fire station, get it open under the same timeline that the FAA has set out. So, you know, there is a strategy in mind for how we're going to do this to make sure that it all gets funded within the time allotted.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Randall?
I appreciate Jim's explanation, but my concern is we're going to end, if we don't forward that money to the next year, then we very well might end up with having to take more money out of the reserves or combination of reserves and raising the tax levy. And without that money available, that bothers me, that extra 200,000 in reserves. That would bother me. We couldn't have that.
So I still haven't heard a second? Okay, well, that motion fails for lack of a second. So now we're back to...
The motion to read for the second time ordinance.
Correct. Forty-six, forty.
Forty, as amended.
As amended. By title only. To spinning the rules.
Right. Does not require a roll call vote and a second, and the motion has been made and seconded.
Yes.
Jesse.
Councilor Maldonado?
You all hate this, but I'm going to make an amendment to the budget.
Okay.
I know, I'm the only one that hasn't, I think. What I would like to do is take that $26,000 in the savings from the recreation specialist, along with a half a percent increase in the property tax, which would equate to 110,000 over three years, $330,000, and put that all to the fire station. It would be...
I'm so sorry.
I will do it one more time. Here we go. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Take the $26,000 in savings from the recreation specialist, combine that with a half a percent increase in the property tax, which is $84,000. With that 26 is 110,000. And for the next two fiscal, three fiscal years, put that into the fire station to help alleviate the cost and, or help alleviate the pressure that it will put on us in the next couple of fiscal years in paying for the fire station.
And the actual effect of that is the 110,000 that would be raised and then allocated toward the fire station for this current coming this year.
Correct. Okay. So do we have a second? Okay, discussion. Councilor Blakey?
I'm not sure I know if I support that yet or not, because I, right now, I like the idea of not raising taxes, but I also, I fully understand that to run a city, we cannot continue to run a city without raising taxes at some point down the road. We have to, the city grows, we grow, and at some point in time, we are going to be asking our citizens for a 1% or 2% increase next year or the year after. It's inevitable. What's it? Dying and paying taxes are two things we can't avoid. We've just got to keep it fair. And I think we've done a really good job this year, and especially last year. I do want to point out one thing about the jail. I just want to get on the table. If we found ourselves short, 50, 100,000, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to be asked in the county to contribute to the fire station at some point in time down the road right now. Right now, the burden lies on us, and the burden lies on us and the airport association. But we, there's no reason why we couldn't be at some point in time, ask them to be budgeting money in the future, too.
I'll say this, and I think Councilor Randall, we had discussed this with the Joint Airport Authority and the former manager, that I think the county is willing to kick in, because if we're going to move the emergency...
Communication center.
Communication center, and incorporate it into that building. They're very interested in helping us out with that, so.
And that could be that 100,000.
And we could be looking at FY 17 or at the end of it. Maybe there's a new road open in North Lewiston, and that District One's closed. We've got one apartment project that's coming to an end, and another one that just broke ground here in town. I mean, there's a new hotel going in. We're going to see a fair amount of new construction for this next year also that's going to be added to the base. So I'm not, I'm not so concerned about 17 and 18. I agree with you that sooner or later, you do have to raise taxes. To what extent and for what specific need? I mean, that's the rub, and that's why we're having this discussion. So, yes, Councilor Daniel?
I agree. Sometimes you do need to spend more money to keep up with costs. I don't think it's this year. You know, last year, I did support the slight increase we did, because I believed it was okay in that case. In this case, this year, we have a massive amount of, whether you want to call it savings or windfall, I call it the stealth tax, that's already built into the budget. So we're already working within the stealth tax. I already think we are accounting for the increase in spending this time around. Maybe next year, you might have a point, but this year, I don't think we need to raise property taxes.
I concur. So, so we had a motion, oh, further comment?
But I do appreciate Councilor Maldonado, because I do understand that your amendment would take the pressure off of future councils long-term. It would help pay for this. I just don't agree with the property tax this year.
Further discussion?
Would Jesse consider a friendly amendment or a change to that amendment to reduce the 1.5% and just move the additional savings over?
Well, that was going to come next, yes. I'm just seeing where we were. Okay, well, you're going to make another amendment, or do you want to amend your, well, let's vote on this one.
I think the most important is to vote on it and then...
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Sixth one?
Do you want to do it? Do you want me to do it?
Okay.
All right, I'll make another amendment. Hopefully this one will pass.
Okay.
How about we take that $26,000 in the savings from the recreation specialist and put it into the fire station?
Second. Any of you have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, now we're back to second reading of ordinance 4640.
I just have a question.
Councilor Daniel?
Mr. Marsh or Mr. Bennett, I know we're pulling 900,000 out of reserves this year, but how much, do we have money going into reserves? So is it actually a little less than 900,000 when you equate that out, or is 900,000 after savings that we typically have? Does that make sense?
Well, we know that we're going to have additional reserves going into the general fund. And the general fund is going to start to be rebuilt over the next couple of years, because the trend, because the economy is going well, is that we are going to start to replace some of that 900,000 that we're taking out of the general fund to build that back up again. Can't tell you exactly how much or how quickly that will occur, but yes, it's probably increasing daily. We just don't know exactly how much.
Councilor Blakey?
May I ask another question along that line? So we recently, in the consent agenda, we approved a standby generator contract we approved, which initially was thought to cost around 100,000, and the bid came in in the high 70s for that generator. Okay, so there's a savings there.
Correct.
That savings ends up, I've got Mr. Davies shaking his head already at me. I was hoping I could have it. Mr. Davies, no, still? Okay.
That goes into the wastewater fund.
That stays in wastewater. I was asking if that works its way back into general fund.
That's enterprise fund.
Yeah, and I thought that was the answer.
But you had the right idea, and that is what happens whenever we do a bid that comes in lower and there's a cost savings. It goes back into the fund that is used to fund the project. And oftentimes, that is the general fund, which helps to increase the bottom line.
Okay. Pro tem?
I have a question on the reserves. We talk about 85 days. We're down to, what is it, 70 days or something like that, or?
No, it took it from 90 to 75.
90 to 75.
Okay. When we calculate that number, are we calculating both the enterprise reserves and the general fund reserves, or simply in the general fund?
Just the general fund.
This is strictly general, general and special municipal purposes. Okay.
I got one more comment.
Okay.
I guess for both of you guys. I get the perception, sitting here, that there's a lot of cities in the state of Lewiston, state of Idaho, and maybe the Northwest in general, who could be very jealous of the city of Lewiston for the financial position that we've gotten you guys into. No, we won't take credit for that. But that, I get the perception that the city of Lewiston is sitting pretty darn good right now, and that there are cities outside looking in who wish they were in our seats. Do I have the wrong perception?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you, Councilor Blakey. Yeah, I think so, to a lot of respects. We've talked a lot about our financial planning that we've done over the many years and the master plans, and I attribute most of that to the fact that we don't just look in a vacuum one year at a time, that we really are looking out, like our financial plan, for example, we're looking out to 2020. Even the spreadsheet in front of you, even though we only are approving one year, we've taken really three, because we think it's important for council to keep your eye on, on those kinds of things. So yes, it doesn't happen overnight. We've been frugal. I want to say another mindset that staff has, there's a misconception oftentimes of the federal government, that you get to the end of the year, let's spend it. Spend it or lose it. Every so often, we'll hear that at the city level, but that is not the case. Ours is just the opposite. Here we are getting late August, and our philosophy is turn the faucet off. If you haven't already got you what you need, it's getting too late, and so don't spend it just because it's in the budget. And I think that's served us really well at the end of each year. So.
Okay.
I do want to make one last comment. With the positions that we did fund and a few things, and we talked about, and this is the relationship with the FRF, half a million. We need to fund those positions, those few items ongoing. We've talked about a property tax, et cetera. For purposes of funding those, we've just reduced the half million from the FRF, and you can see that at the top in blue. And so what we are saying to council is going forward, unless something changes, it won't be a half a million anymore. So when we have that conversation, it'll be closer to, say, 300,000. Here, it's depicted at 272. We're going to add 26 more to it, so it's going to be closer to 300,000. So that's just more of, again, in terms of being fiscally responsible, it's no longer half million, it's 300,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So all in favor of reading ordinance 4640 for the second time, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4640 as amended by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance, appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, providing for the filing of a copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State as required by law and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4640's been read for the second time. Now I'll entertain a motion, well, let's see. Next up, ordinance 4641, potential second reading. This is fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Nespers County Commissioners in the amount of $17,474,300. Entertain a motion to read ordinance 4641 for the second time by title only?
Mayor?
Yes?
We have an amended number for you, based on the actions that were taken by the council at the last budget.
Hang on, that should be right here.
Hearing, and the actions taken tonight, which really have no net effect on that number. The new number is 17 million...
Two, 280, 300?
306,300.
Three oh six?
300.
Wasn't that the number from last year? Or not, not last year, but last meeting?
Right. The difference was 168,000.
Correct, Councilor. That's 1% that went away.
Oh, yes, and remember, they said, check the math.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, back up. Providing for the tax certification to the Nespers County Commissioners in the amount of $17,306,300. Entertain a motion to read for the second time by title only, ordinance 4641.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4641 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nespers County, Idaho, in the amount of $17,306,300. Providing a certified copy of the annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nespers County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2015-16 fiscal year, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4641's been read for the second time. We'll move on to ordinance 4637 for the potential second reading. This is amending Lewiston City Code Section 7-1, increasing and adding certain ambulance service fees. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4637 for the second time by title only. Spinning the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we strike Section 1, Number 14, and refer that back to MSAB for review, to include but not limiting, but not limited to, to see if whether or not it's feasible to charge someone based on excess use.
Okay. Yes?
I'd just like to ask if Chief Michael Busch could come down, so we could at least have him down here, so we can ask questions from here on out?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Kind of state.
Certainly.
I think going from zero, creating a fee from zero up to 200, I understand that they're trying to match other areas what they charge, but when Mr. Havens spoke last meeting, it kind of got me thinking that maybe this much, this fast, and for this type of service may not be in the best interest. And that's why I'm not saying to keep it out permanently, but I'd like to see it go back to MSAB possibly for review.
Certainly. I have a few more numbers. We ran off when we first originally started doing this. We looked at our treat no transport numbers, which are BLS and ALS. And so I went through last week, and I went actually through the 191 reports that are treat no transport for this current fiscal year. I read every report. There were 42 reports that are actually meet the true definition, according to what would be in this ordinance, of an advanced cardiac or an advanced life support fee. Of those numbers, there were 19 diabetic calls. There were two cardiac-type issues, one breathing difficulty, and 18 cardiac arrests that were terminated in the field. I know there were some comments out there that we've heard about, we would just come up on any person that was, looked to appear dead, we would just throw a monitor on them and they would get a charge. There actually was 88 calls so far this year that would meet cardiac arrest. We only transported or non-transported 18 of those that met ALS. So all those other 60 would not have received any fee under this current ordinance. So I just wanted to give you guys some additional numbers that I've found as going through this. So, you know, there's 42 calls out of this current fiscal year that would meet. the requirement of what is in the ordinance today. So, just for some information, just to be able to help you out, because I know it helped me as I looked through that this week.
Okay. Councilor Blakey?
Is there any kind of average cost? Someone shows up to my house, whatever, I call, I warrant a call. I don't, I think I might have a heart attack or whatever. I keep thinking of that commercial on the television, you're going to have a heart attack in ten minutes. And I might. Is there a cost? What are you going to spend on me when I'm laying there on the floor?
It would depend upon the call, but I know that our Chair of MSAB tonight talked about there are expenses, especially cardiac arrest. If you take a cardiac arrest, there are going to be expenses that if we work, what we call work-a-code on the scene, there's going to be the cost of the interosseous IO needle. There's going to be cost for the D-Fib pads. Those supplies and meds are probably going to range anywhere from two hundred to three hundred dollars, depending on the level of that. A standard diabetic call, we're probably looking between the skills and stuff, we're probably looking at about a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. Skills, meaning the paramedic having to physically, you know, start an IV, physically have to put on a defibrillator, you know, analyze the rhythm and actually administer a shock. Those type of things would be skills. What we don't figure out, and I've not come to the finite number of what it would be, I mean, I could do that based upon what a cost of a three-person engine company and a two-person medic company of what a call would cost. It's just very hard because we could be on the medical call one moment, we might be on a structure fire the next moment, we might be in a training evolution, and so, it is hard to try to determine. But some of the fixed cost of the supplies, we are able to kind of, to break down based upon the call type.
It's fair to say, I think it's fair to say that there's a hundred or two hundred dollars being spent on many of the calls.
That is correct, yes.
Even if it's just giving a person and it turns out nothing more than oxygen, I know an oxygen mask isn't even cheap and you can't recycle it. And then, the tank probably has to, at some point in time, you refill the tank, correct?
That is correct.
There are costs associated up and down the line.
Yes.
Outside of looking at a person and saying, you're okay, don't call again. I guess there are costs that need to be recovered at some point.
There are costs associated with that, yeah.
And as it is right now, and that's one of the problems I've had tossing this around, you know, listening to Mr. Havens, and Mr. Havens does deal with a certain segment of the population that we have, and it's actually a growing population in this town, the infirmed and whatnot. But people that pay property taxes, whether they're paying property taxes through the fees that are established by the nursing home or care facility that they're living in, that's fact, property taxes are certainly factored into what the rent is for those people. So, it's not obvious if they're, just because they live there, they don't pay property tax. They're paying property tax. So, that's the one I've had a tough time reconciling is you are paying property taxes and you should receive a service from your property taxes. And that's one that, you know, for this year, I mean, bumping it two hundred bucks, I just, I guess I have a tough time with that, and I kind of agree with Councilor Daniel on this, so anyways, I'll leave it there. Councilor Malinato?
Travis, you gave us this ambulance user fees from other communities.
The study that we conducted, yes?
In June.
Yes.
And none of us said anything then. But the average for a treatment no transport ALS is two hundred and ninety-seven dollars if you take into account Ada County, Idaho Falls, Cootney County, Pasco, Pocatello, and Pullman doesn't do that. But some bigger, smaller cities within our area are charging these fees. And you told me that Pullman charges a thousand dollars for some things that we charged significantly less for.
Base fees are different. Part of that is why our fees are based upon our demographics versus theirs, but yes. Our ambulance fees are very reasonable in the city of Lewiston.
Do you, do you mind if I ask another one, Mr. Mayor? Do you guys have people that, I mean, we've, I think we've discussed this, that misuse this service?
We do. We have our individuals where our crews will consider them, our frequent flyers. That is one of the big focuses that I will tell council, that we in the Fire Department are actively working at addressing because whether we're associated here, most of these ALS charges are not our frequent flyers. But what we're looking at is changing our response model so that we're not rolling out an ALS ambulance on all of these, what we consider by our priority dispatch in a lower acuity response. Actively, our department, we are meeting with our staff next month, and we will be coming forward with some pilot programs of how we can change our response model to better affect those. But yes, counselor, we do have people that do use us. They are not the ALS-type fees of all of these that I went down, these forty-two, there was only one name I saw twice, and that was a diabetic. Most of our people that call, call us and we show up and then we help them and we go back. I can give you an example. Last Sunday, I listened to a dispatch of a sore throat that we send an ALS ambulance because that's how we've always done it. Those are the things that I internally, as a fire chief, have to administer and manage how our response models are. And we will actively, as part of our strategic plan, in changing that. But, yeah, we, I mean, we have users that call nine-one-one thirteen times in a twenty-four-hour period. Now, we work aggressively with social services to get them additional help. The problem is that doesn't happen fast, and so, we deal with those things. But so, collectively, we are trying to work on that aspect of it and stuff, and we will figure that out. But those don't affect that ALS charges, is what we kind of assumed initially, even including our MSAB. We kind of thought that till we looked at the actual data.
Thank you, Travis.
Okay. Councilor Blakey?
Well, someone who calls thirteen times in a, what period of time?
Twenty-four hours.
That's a violation of some law, right? I mean, I'm afraid to, God forbid, I'm afraid to ever touch, I told my kids, never touch nine-one-one unless I'm on the floor. Aren't they, I mean, social services, or is that where they belong?
They usually need help. A lot of times, we are the only resource that people can turn to. When the washing machine is spraying water all over the house and no one's available, it's a single mom. They call. And, you know, you call, we come. But we want to internally look at how we come and what type of resources are we going to respond. And internally, we're going to work on that. But, yeah, it's, there's nothing we can do besides to get them additional help. The problem is those numbers do continue. We saw a three percent increase in the non-transports, but they're more of the BLS side than they are on the ALS side of things.
So, right now, we've got a zero-dollar fee, we're going to two hundred dollars. Where exactly does that money go? What does it pay for? Does it, is it just for recuperating the costs or?
Yes, that, those funds would go back as part of our revenue, which go back into the general fund. So, that would help offset into the general fund. I ran the numbers. If we collected the two hundred dollars from the forty-two, we have roughly, it's about eight thousand dollars of revenue this year. It's not a huge, huge amount, but it is revenue that is collected. That does help offset because we do pay for supplies out of the Fire Department's budget, which is based in the general fund. So, and the supplies continue to go up. It's unbelievable what we pay for those now. But that's where the funds would go, as any of our fee we collect, go back into the general fund as part of our revenue from the EMS side.
Council Rattle?
I would like to amend that motion and with the stipulation they can charge a hundred dollars.
That's not part of my motion.
You set a price?
My motion is to refer that section back to MSAB. Sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay.
No, his motion was to send that back to MSAB. So, removing it essentially from this ordinance. We clear on that? Okay. Further discussion? Council Collins?
Travis, with the charge that's there, when it comes to insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, is that something that is normally covered?
Yes, there is for, with those type of patients, Medicare and Medicaid will cover certain amounts to it. Until we bill those, what will the exact amount be? Will it be the full two hundred? I cannot tell you. We believe it will be close to that based upon other departments in the study, obviously. We don't anticipate them to be charging those funds and not being able to recoup those expenses. But I can't give you the definite number, but we do know that these are allowable charges. And actually, so that council knows, the only thing Medicare or Medicaid will pay on a non-transport is only ALS-type charges. If we were to set a fee that says we're going to charge everybody that doesn't, that we don't transport a hundred dollars, we physically, by federal law, cannot reimburse any funds from that through Medicare and Medicaid. It's only for the ALS stuff because there's a physical skill that's additional of what the normal services are being delivered.
Okay. Councilor Daniel?
I just had a question. This doesn't, I guess, exactly pertain to my amendment, I apologize. Is there any concern that by instituting a fee, that people may start taking more advantage of it? You say the average cost is over two hundred. Is there any concern that maybe people will say, okay, I never used nine-one-one as my hospital visit, but now since I have a fee, it must be okay, so I'm just going to use that instead and they can bill my insurance?
We don't anticipate that. Obviously, that could be something, that's something I have never thought of. Most people utilize the service for when they have a need, but I couldn't tell you if that would be an offset of it. It is a potential, something I haven't thought of.
Councilor Blakey?
Yeah, the frequent flyers, and I know there aren't many of them, but I'm kind of making the assumption then that those folks don't worry about paying the bill anyway. They either on Medicaid, Medicare, social service program, and there's no repercussions if they show up a hundred times to your house.
You are correct.
Okay. So. No further discussion. The amendment is to strike item fourteen, or section fourteen, I guess would be, and remand it back to MSAB. Did you have some specific?
Just to, I guess, like I said, I want them to review whether or not that, not only is that appropriate amount, but is there a way to address the frequent flyers? Also, now, thinking along the lines of my question, how of the other cities that have this fee, do they have a higher amount of usage than we would? And would that mean we might need more personnel as a result? Just to review that section again.
Okay. We clear on that? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails.
May I have seat shovels, please?
That was aye. Five-two. So, back to reading ordinance forty-six thirty-seven for the second reading. We had a motion and a second. Do we still have discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries?
Five-two.
Five-two? Ayes? Okay.
Approving the second reading of ordinance forty-six thirty-seven by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code, section seven dash one, increasing and adding certain ambulance service fees and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance forty-six thirty-seven's been read for the second time. Move on to actified agenda E, and that would be all surface roofing change order, authorizing the payment of thirty thousand, or thirty thousand and forty dollars from the building, maintenance, operating budget to all surface roofing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the all surface roofing change order.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion. Mr. Barker? Would you like to join the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just have a point of clarification. As far as under item C for consent to gen, it lists the cost for the change order to be thirty thousand, zero, four, zero. You'll see in my explanation through the memo and then in the agenda item history sheet, what I'm asking for is actually twenty-two thousand, seven, four, eight. So, that number should be the one that you're discussing and voting on. The thirty thousand, zero, four, zero includes an already encumbered seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty fours for some replacement of rotted insulation that was at City Hall. So, that was just something that was discovered when that roof and all the rocks came off of the City Hall. So, that should not be included. That's already been encumbered.
Okay, so, that total number is twenty-two, twenty-two, seven, forty-eight?
Correct.
I guess the reason why I kind of wanted this pulled is I just found it odd that the the materials list was off by that much. I mean.
Yeah, what that was?
We've got aerial photos, we've got everything. People still have measuring tapes and measuring wheels. How can you be off by forty-five percent on the square footage of the roof?
So, what happened was, that was through our contractor that does a lot of our architecture work. There was a portion of the roof that was not included that should have been included. And when we had our pre-bid meeting and walked through and actually went up on all three roofs, a couple of the, those that were looking at submitting bids brought their own measuring devices and did do some clarification of measuring. But most of those that bid on it did, basically went off of the numbers that were provided to them. So, that was a miscalculation as far as, it's an expense that was going to be, need to be paid for anyway, but what was provided in the bid was incorrect.
Okay.
So, the total amount with this change is still under what the second bidder's?
Second bidder was.
Number was, anyway. And there's been some discussion. We don't have anything formalized during writing, but we do have some potential projects that we will not be getting charged the architecture fees for that are coming up within the city, just to show that good faith from our architect.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr.?
It's basically a screw-up, right?
Sure. Happens every now and then. Luckily, this is one that doesn't happen very often or hasn't happened with this group.
And it appears that the architect is willing to eat some future costs.
Exactly.
For his oversight to stay in good grace for the city.
Correct. And we are asking or saying that this would be paid for out of our current budget line that we have within building maintenance. We do have some additional funds that are available, that were made available throughout this year through savings in different areas that we can cover the cost.
Okay. Okay, so, no further discussion. All in favor of? Sorry. Twenty-two, seven, forty-eight. Okay. So, any other discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor of covering the all surface roofing change order, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Well, that concludes our active agenda for this evening. I'm on to unfinished new business. City Council comments, do we have any this evening? Councilor Blakey?
Police retirement fund meeting tomorrow at one o'clock, I believe. I was looking at, yes, one o'clock. And open to public. Always interesting to find out the performance of the police funds, how they've done, and get a chance to visit. The money manager from US Bank will be there, and it's always a very interesting discussion. Talk, and you hear their views and where they feel the market's been and where it's going. So, it's more than just a meeting about how the fund, it's about how, just overview of the market, too.
Okay. Council Collins?
Uh, just a quick question or a couple of questions for Mr. Barker with Community Park. We had talked at an earlier session at some point in time about the extension of the sidewalk up there. Do we know what the status of that is at this point in time when that's going to occur?
No, you're fine. So, on your, I believe it's your first September meeting, there'll be an approval for that bid award for the completion of Community Park for the exterior. So, that'll be on that agenda. That and then an add-all for expanding the parking lot area at Sunset Park.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, my second comment on Community Park, just as a public notice. Mr. Mayor, my second comment on Community Park, just as a public notice, there's an event happening this weekend, the Mud Run, which is a nonprofit. Money's going to the Idaho Food Bank here in Lewiston, which I understand is having their grand opening here another week or so.
Next week, the 26th.
Just wanted to express that, and they will accept race day registration, so come and get dirty.
Come and get dirty.
Counsel Randle.
Well, I just noticed in our Idaho Politics Weekly from Zion's Bank, they were talking about the survey they did of Idaho citizens, and they've, shows that 30% of our population statewide is now retired. So it's gonna get harder and harder to ask for tax increases, so that's something to keep in mind.
Okay. Any other council comments? Once again, I'd just like to thank the council and all the people that took the time out of their lives to come down here and testify in front of us today. Once again, I think we had a really productive meeting, some good back and forth, and a lot of ideas being exchanged. We still have one more meeting next week, which will be the third and final reading, potentially, if that's approved by the council, for the city budget. So we'll certainly have time for people to come up and testify again, and look forward to it. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a few housekeeping things. Of course, our final budget hearing, final budget meeting will be next Monday night here at this location at LC, at which time the council will adopt the budget as it may be amended, but that will be the end of the budget process for this year. We have packets available right now for the upcoming election for individuals in the community that would like to run for office for the city council, and those are, will be available beginning August 24th through September 4th. Just a two-week window, basically. And you can pick those packets up here at City Hall from the city clerk's office. So that will be going forward. Now, that, that's been noticed, you may have heard the ads on the radio and/or seen them in the newspaper, trying to get, you know, some information out to the public about the opportunity to be involved in the upcoming election. So that's coming up. First day of school is September 3rd. September 7th is Labor Day, so that's our regularly scheduled work session, so we have rescheduled that to the afternoon of September 14th at 3:00 prior to the council meeting that night. So, and of course, don't forget hot August nights on the 28th and 29th of August. Hopefully, it won't be 105.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Advisor board and commission appointments?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Collins.
We talked earlier this evening with the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, and we have two positions that are currently open there due to changes in jobs or relocation. I do have two names that I'd like to submit with the permission of the council simultaneously here for approval. We have an application from Leslie Auger and then also an application from Jennifer Greenwich for this board.
Okay. Second. Got a motion and a second to appoint, I'm sorry?
Leslie Auger, A-U-G-I-R, and Jennifer Greenwich, G-R-I-N-A-G-E.
Okay. All those in favor of the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Once again, I'll throw this out here, I know Counsel Randle's been paying close attention, and we have two members of the Joint Airport Authority sitting in our audience, that Mr. Mike Martin has indicated his desire to step down from his post. So did we have a clarification on residency?
There's no.
For the city's appointed positions?
Correct. There is no requirement.
Okay, so we can appoint, just, we just need applicants?
Correct.
Okay. So if everybody's clear on that, we're soliciting applicants to be on the Joint Airport Authority, and we'll try and conduct interviews. I think we're gonna shoot for the beginning of Sep, beginning of September.
Yeah, I asked Kerry to have the advertisement go until the Friday before Labor Day, and then, then after, sometime after Labor Day, we can do our interviews.
Okay. So anybody that's interested, please contact Kerry down at City Hall.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Protem Johnson.
We still have an opening on the Transportation Advisory Commission. There's been no applications to date.
Okay. Again, anybody interested in the TAC, please contact Kerry. And if there's none others, I guess move on to work session, agenda topics. Pretty good, yes. Counsel Daniel.
I'd like to obviously discuss ADA, the transition plan, what we need to do.
And that'll be on the 14th?
I'm gonna say yes. I, we have to go back and look at what's on there right now, but I think we can move some things around to make sure that we do get that as one of the first orders of business at the work session.
Okay. Any others? Counsel Blakely.
Along with Mr. Daniel's comment, our request, is it possible to bring in, I invite an ADA coordinator from another city to maybe do a presentation for us in a work session in the future?
We can certainly try to do that, yes. We'll, we'll look and see if we can get a, a guest speaker.
Okay. Anything else? Counsel Randle.
Just a suggestion, Jim. Might call Mr. Leeper from the.
City attorney and I have already had contact with Mr. Leeper from OSCO. I've been trying to set up a meeting with him, actually, trying to find a time that works for everybody, so we'll certainly reach out to him.
Good enough. Well, there's nothing else, I guess we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you again, everybody.
Jim? Did you see this in the?